All right, I'm gonna call to order this meeting in the Madison Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, June twenty fourth at four thirty and the first order of business would be a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, approval of minutes from June tenth. Motion by Rick, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
One of us, no, two. Oh, we did talk about that last time too, so you're, according to the attorney, you're better off to vote no because you're here.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I will change my vote to no.
There we go. All right, approval of non-public minutes from June tenth.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Rick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
One no. And approval of the manifest. Payroll thirty-three thousand nine hundred eight dollars and four cents. Payroll liability is ten thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars forty-six cents. Counts payable seventy-one thousand one hundred eighteen dollars sixty-eight cents. New Hampshire retirement system eighteen thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars ninety-three cents. That number's smaller than usual. Three thousand five hundred ten dollars to the school.
Yeah, they, that was the smallest amount.
For a total of one hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we will open the public hearing for RSA forty-one nine dash A to discuss and receive input on fees for the recreation program. Notice was published on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five edition of the Conway Day of the Sun posted at the Madison Civil Lake Post Office and upper and lower of the town hall on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the proposed changes to the soon lasting fee schedule. One child would be a hundred and forty-two dollars, which is the same as it was previously. However, if you have two children in the same family, it would be a hundred per child and three or more children would be eighty-five per child. Basically, we're just looking to do, I think we've done this in the past with other fees, where families have multiple kids and you give them a discount for signing up more than one kid for the program. It's not a huge outlook, I don't think, but one or two families that might be looking at utilizing this, but it's not big numbers. Any comment from the board? Any questions from the public? Sharon?
Um, yes, sir. Um, so when you're saying just a couple of families, so the end, the economic impact to the town is what?
Is.
Do we have a number?
No, because we haven't put these fees out there, because we haven't had this public hearing yet, so we don't know how many families are gonna attempt to utilize it. My guess is two families, I think, right now.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Do we know how many families used it last year? Or it was, it didn't exist, but how many families registered multiple children last year?
I think there were three families last year that would have used it. We had donations last year that helped. They basically donated for a child to do swimming lessons.
Just curious, how big an impact?
I think it's minimal.
Sounds it, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Don't see any, I will entertain a motion, we'll close the public hearing portion, and then I'll entertain a motion from this board to institute these fees. As written.
And so move.
Motion by Jake, second by Rick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And public comment.
Hi, good evening, good evening, Donna Vayou, um, just a couple of comments. I received my letter from Avatar today about the reassessment. And I was disappointed to read that, um, it's only, um, appointments are only phone only. So, no one-on-one, um, other than the phone, and no site visits. Um, if I recall correctly, the last reassessment was during COVID.
Correct.
And it was very understandable that there was no onsite visits or in-person. So this is a, this will be a second assessment, full-town, full-assessment without an onsite visit. Or opportunity to meet in person. I'm wondering, um, I, how, how, how did that happen and can that be changed?
My understanding, and Linda, you may be correct here from wrong, but you're welcome to call and talk, speak with Chad and have those appointments via phone. And if the situation warrants it, I still believe you will make an onsite visit.
Well, I'm thinking globally, not just me, just globally for the town. The assessors haven't set foot into homes.
They have been on properties, they, and they've knocked on doors.
But it, it hasn't been afforded to the general public. And it's two reassessments. To me, it's substantial.
Your question's lost on me because Avatar did bake onsite visits to the homes.
Well, they just did a walk-around.
I forget the percentage, but.
They just did a walk-around, they didn't knock on the door.
Yes.
No, I believe.
Maybe not yours, but.
No, that, that was, that was the plan.
Once every, they do about twenty percent of the town a year.
Correct.
They send notifications to people, and if they catch them at home, they ask to view the property, they had a letter first. And if for some reason they don't catch them at home, they put them in the pool again to let them know when there's another opportunity that they might be coming out. Sometimes they just don't catch up with people, there's a lot of second homes in town and they don't get into the property. If they really needed to get into the property, we would make it a point.
Right, and I think internal visits will be based on building permit applications and things of that nature for the most part.
They try and get in every, for so many years.
Well, they didn't last assessment because COVID, and that was very understandable.
And they did attempt to get into properties this assessment. I don't know how many they were able to get into right now, but.
I would ask the board to reevaluate that, um, that protocol and, um, ha- ha- have at least the opportunity for taxpayers to choose to have Avatar come and visit inside and out.
Thank you.
I think it would be beneficial for the town.
Yeah, I, I just thought it would be beneficial if a physical person was there, so if you've got documentation or rationale for your concern, um, that someone would physically be there. It was really nice in the past when you could come in here, there was a person, there were times set up and you would, you met with that person. Rather than talking on the phone, a lot can get lost in just a phone conversation. Um, so I would really encourage just the, the sit-down, have that individual physically come here and taxpayers have that opportunity to meet with them. And be heard.
And possibly if they could, um, justify a home visit, that could be discussed between the assessor and the property owner at that point. And, um, but I, I think a sit-down visit is minimal.
Sharon?
Actually, I will say that, um, when I met with the assessors after we bought the property and, and were looking at and going through and I didn't understand my assessment, it was hugely beneficial to me as a homeowner and taxpayer to sit down with, and it was Chad at the time, and probably still is. But it was, you know, to sit down with Chad and have him actually explain some of this. And I know that there are, there is a big book that explains all the codes and all those things, but I, you know, I, I would venture to guess that even Chad doesn't necessarily have time to reread that book, 'cause it's probably about this thick, I believe. Um, but I think, I, I think especially when we're looking at an assessment that's increasing to fair market value and there's a ninety-plus percent, um, increase in, in the assessed values. I think it really is important for the taxpayer to understand how that assessment has arrived at, where it comes from. And I don't necessarily believe that that can be done over the phone, I, I really don't. Not, not effectively and not, not to have everybody really understand.
And Chad was here a month ago? About a month ago, sat down and gave a brief overview of that. And those phone conversations are still available and those in-person things are still available if concerns arise.
That was just for the general assessment, not one-on, not for individual taxpayers. And the phone calls are only three days, eight to four. So what I'm suggesting that the selectmen at least entertain that those would be in-person hours.
You've signed a contract.
Yeah.
So is the process that they can have the initial phone call, but then if, we only, we only have like the three days, they may not get to everybody where there'll probably be a ton of questions where it was such a big project. Is it possible for Chad to meet in person with folks with whom it, it just phone doesn't get as far as they need to to close the conversation?
I think that's always been the case.
I'm sure he.
As long as there's concerns in it. And it, this whole thing is lost on me because it sounds like you're looking for Chad to sit down with each and every individual that gets reassessed in this town, and I don't think that that's possible. When concerns come up, you can sit down with Chad if the situation presents itself.
Well, not every taxpayer is gonna call and want an appointment.
They still have a date and process if there's someone who happens to.
Right.
So, there's limited hours.
But if, if they're not concerned enough to call and make an appointment, then why would Chad reach out to sit with them in the first place?
So we can look at like the phone call process as basically a triage, where he can try to address as much as he can over the phone, but then, sounds like process anyways, for folks to, if, you know, if the phone call just doesn't do it, it sounds like he would be available for in-person?
Would that be, I mean, that, that's.
I think that's always been the case.
A viable option, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, I think they're saying that that's currently what it says.
That's currently the process, if you have a concern, you're welcome to call and if that concern dictates.
It doesn't indicate that.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, okay.
It's probably lost on people, 'cause it's not available.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I, yes, speaking of public comment, um, am I correct in that the, uh, decision made was to have a second public comment at the end of the meeting or somewhere towards the end of the meeting? For the public who can't get here?
The decision was made to follow the current procedure for selectmen's meetings, which is, I think, in that book that floats around out there, that the second public comment portion is at the chairman's discretion after the meeting.
So, people don't, won't know if there's a second public comment?
If you have a question and you raise your hand, more than likely, I'm, I'm gonna let you ask it.
Is there an objection to putting it in the agenda? Possible second comment if questions unanswered or something?
I, I don't think that it's necessary because it is in our procedure.
It's in your procedures?
Mm-hmm. Which was adopted, revised in two thousand and twelve. Opportunity for additional public comments and media requests at the end of each meeting will be at the chairman's discretion. So it's gonna depend on the meeting, how long the meeting's gone, what we're discussing, and if the public has questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Well, in the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move directly to swearing in our new officer, Joshua Shafford. Welcome.
Aye.
Michael?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joshua Shafford.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a full-time police officer.
As a full-time police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pain and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll put it back down, I just didn't drop.
The twenty-four.
Uh, he didn't read the fine print.
I do it in the military, right? And I was just, I was just.
No, she wants to stick around.
Engaged ETC lawyer.
Very bad, it was, um, motion come for you.
Uh, back up here?
Yeah.
Before I butcher it, the C name is like Candela.
Oh.
Chandella.
Chandella.
Or you can say DTC, they call them.
I will make a motion to retain the service of, uh, DTC, PLLC with respect to potential PFAS claims and authorize myself to sign the engagement letter. Second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye. I wanna put it with the.
Yes.
Have a question? I'm just, I didn't know what DTC was.
Donna Hugh Tucker and Chandella.
Okay, so that's a, a legal firm that the town is going to, or has just voted to, um, engage with in anticipation of?
Anything related.
PFAS.
Yep.
Is there a, a cost associated with that? Is there a round figure, is there a retainer fee?
No retainer fee, it's all hourly.
It's all hourly bills?
Uh, sealed bid proposal, town hall boiler.
So I crafted this with a little bit of help and, um, mostly because it's, according to the first, uh, purchasing policy, it needs to go out to a sealed bid. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with me moving forward on it. Mostly because it's eventually gonna get cold, more than you'd.
Doesn't feel that way.
No, I know. But, I, um, picked some potential dates and things like that, I mean, I, feel free to adjust what I did. I basically said that it would be completed by the, you know, the work would be completed by the end of August and we, that would give them about a month to do the work from when you would be opening the bids on July twenty-second. And it'll give them close to a month, I get this advertised, to come in with bids.
Yeah, 'cause parts might be an issue if we wait too long. Right, parts may be an issue if we wait too long, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Was to give them enough time so if they have to order something in it.
So we're not doing it in.
October, November.
Everybody wants their stuff.
Wishing we had a day like today.
Is it, is the, is a month enough time for them to, you know, to get all the parts and install, have everything ordered and installed?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's up to us, I, I just threw those dates in there, I have no idea how long it would take somebody to.
Do we wanna give them till September?
It's a, that's a, it's a good, it's a good negotiation point.
I think, I think that, right, the preliminary date is all right, and if, if there is an issue.
With pieces.
Right, I, I mean, if there's a supply and demand issue for parts and pieces, we can adjust accordingly. But I think that that date gives us, and them, all right, an idea of when the work would be, 'cause they may not be able, certain people see it and say, oh, we can't do it by then, so we won't put a bid in. I think that that's gonna allow us a little more flexibility with who.
What we're saying is we don't wanna wait till spring.
Well, exactly, right.
We just wanna get it done.
Right, get it, with that date, I think that would be good, and if, if you run into an issue, it could be pushed back, you know?
Just following your logic, I guess I'm concerned that folks who could do it in September would say, oh, I can't do it a month and forget about it, I'm in a bid. I have no idea timeframe zone boilers these days, I just know everything is end of late.
Be fine with an end of August date. I would think, I would think so too, I mean, at this point, there's not a whole lot of boiler work going on.
Okay.
Especially installs.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if we don't get any bids, I'm.
Then we go, go back to the down board, right?
Uh, I'm good with the dates.
I think it's good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, no, um, in terms of, um, publishing it, should I just send it to local people, should I put it in the paper, or should I, how far do you want me to go with?
I would just send it to.
I was gonna say, the ones that, you know, the ones that typically respond, so send it to three or four. 'Cause we need a minimum of three, correct?
Three, yeah.
Yeah, it's three for this thing.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know that I'd waste the money putting it in the paper when we can just give it directly to the people we know are gonna bid it.
Is this what we put in the budget at the last minute, or is that the DPW heater?
That was a DPW heater, this happened like last month.
Mother's Day.
Many of you guys came down.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, no, it's not in the budget.
Perfect. We like that, right?
Yeah. It wasn't anticipated.
All right. Voluntary change of address.
Yeah, we just have to do paperwork on this. They wanna come in off of Ridge Drive versus Upper Lakeview Drive, so if you look at the map on the back, they've got kind of jump both pieces of property. But it's already been assigned twenty-one, so we have to make this change.
So do they have a permitted driveway off of, is it Ridge, Ridgey?
Yeah, I think, I, I think, I say Ridgey, I don't know. The, um, they have it, what am I trying to say? The, uh, Idolwise has conditionally approved it based on getting a number. So they know where it's gonna be, and that's all good, but they didn't wanna officially give them the permit for the driveway until we were good about changing the number. So, but they do have, uh, building permit waiting in the wings with their driveway permit to give to Bob, but this, the whole thing is waiting on to make sure they have a valid number for their property.
Seems pretty straightforward.
It is kinda, it's more just people.
Do we need a motion or are we just gonna?
Could we do a motion just to make sure?
Second.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask a question. Are there nine-one-one considerations for changing that address?
It would.
It changes, it changes the E nine-one-one address, but I don't think it's gonna affect any emergency response.
No.
Well, no, it'll just get us to the right place.
Right.
No, there's a process that.
Depends on where you live and how they go.
Right.
And I've been in touch with our liaison about to make sure that the process goes correctly and follow on that process.
I think Bob kinda oversees that too, because when we added an accessory dwelling unit, it got its own E number. It's still our property and still our mailing address, but it had to get its own E number, so it was, yeah, they were pretty good about.
And, well, Bob takes care of Madison, Idolwise takes care of Idolwise, so.
Gotcha.
We don't have any, they gave, Idolwise said that their number would be seventeen, and I'm over and forward with that.
Do we have a motion to approve this voluntary address change by Rick? Got a second?
I can second it.
Second, Joy's seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll put that in the signature.
Full business. Do we have any members of the public that are looking to be on the CIP committee?
That I'm aware of.
So.
Can you speak up a little bit louder?
Absolutely, sorry.
Thank you.
The, uh, CIP committee, so we, we have a member from the planning board.
Yeah, and Cordell said the alternate is fine.
The alternate is fine. Somebody, did Jim take that?
I don't remember who took it.
I don't, we need somebody from this board to take it.
When do they meet, do we know? We don't know yet.
We don't, we don't know anything yet, we don't know who's going to chair this, and I don't know how the chair position works. Because it's a, a board made up of members of other boards, and like me sitting at, on the planning board or on the rec committee, I could never be the chair, so I don't know how.
Well, it's statute, it's set up statutorily, so it's not.
Right, so I don't know that that comes into play anymore.
Well, you're not like, they.
You're not an ex officio member, you're a member.
Think anybody could do it.
So, somebody would have to take the reins, whoever that may be. Do we have a member of the budget committee?
Not yet.
We've not received any requests from the, that committee to have a member sit on there, so. In fact, I think I had asked Selectmen Gray earlier this week as to what the status of it was, 'cause we haven't heard anything.
Well, we don't, we didn't have enough members at the time because we needed a member of the planning board we hadn't met yet, and none of them have offered themselves up yet. Now we do, we need a member of the budget committee. So I'm formally asking if you could find a member, a member of the budget committee to sit on the CIP committee.
I anticipate us having a meeting in July to do some of that admin type stuff, and we'll, we'll discuss it then, I'll make sure I put in a.
Okay, so we'll look for that in July for a member of the budget committee, and in the meantime.
I'll offer.
Joy's offering, and I'm not gonna allow any more discussion, she's got it.
But we still don't have any residents come forward yet.
No, but according to our attorney's advice, this, we would have a forum without any members of the public.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
So we, we would have a, a budget committee, a planning board, and a board of selectmen members, so they can meet. Would be nice to have members of the public join, but maybe once they meet, they can start spreading the word.
Tia Gagnon had expressed interest in town meeting.
She is the planning board member.
Oh, great. Oh, hence why we had to check to see if an alternate.
Yeah.
Yep, got it.
All right, so once we have a member from the budget committee, they can set up a meeting and go from there.
I'm not above bribing people with donuts, so. I will feed you if you show up.
All right. Joy, anything on your list?
Um, uh, folks have researched me about the Veterans Monument. They, there's, um, a resident who reached out, she didn't know if her husband was on it or not, um, but she just wanted to know the process. Is the process Select Board or Mike Brooks, it's Select.
Yes, it comes here, but they can stop in and see Mike Brooks. Yes, it comes here, but they can stop in and see Mike Brooks, and Mike has been taking the names for.
No, Linda.
Linda? Oh, see, I'm wrong, perfect, Linda.
Okay.
DD two fourteen.
DD two fourteen.
And the, the theory was, I wanna say we have two right now waiting. And uh, the theory was that we. My thought was, wait till the end of August and then reach out to the um, the engraver, so that it would possibly be ready, that they'd be able to fit it in before Veterans Day to get those done for. In that span there, so.
And are we doing refacing or putting a metal plaque over, I can't recall what the final decision was.
Oh, it got fixed.
It's already fixed.
With, with a metal plaque?
Nope. Oh, shimmed down and re engraved and reinstalled.
Okay. I couldn't remember, thank you. Alright, I'll let folks know to bring the DD two fourteen. To Linda. Excuse me.
Can I um, ask a question? The um, Veterans Service Committee, we are setting up a tent this weekend at the transfer station. And hopefully, we'll have a, a form for them to kind of put, you know, it, tell them what they need to apply. For the uh, Veterans Tax Exemption as well. And I would probably give them the information to also be placed on the monument. And I was also just gonna talk to the police chief to see if we could have that road sign, you know, indicating that. The Veterans Service Committee would be at the town transfer station like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. From, I think it's at seven when they open up till noon time. Yes, try to get the word out as well as to their tax exemption, and as well as hopefully recruiting more veterans, you know, because when we had the Memorial Day Parade, unfortunately. The majority of us that were there are, you know, above the age limit that we shouldn't be marching, or. We, you know, get our younger veterans involved with our town, so. And I was just gonna speak to the chief after the meeting and.
Well, I, I, I thought that to get the word out is great, but to have those forms and everything there, I just assumed that's a function of Town Hall and the Selectman's Office. And there's, there's criteria, and there's delicate sensitive information on DD two fourteens to just have them be passing through people.
Oh, no, no, we're not, I don't.
And then there's um, the, also the fact that. Right now, if you apply for uh, Veterans Credit.
Next year.
Right, it, we've missed the, the deadline to get anything additionally for twenty twenty four, and I just feel that. Maybe it's better to come from the horse's mouth at town, at the Town Hall in terms of details on it, but getting the word out that it's available is, is great.
I'm gonna defer this to that optional public comment portion at the end, and it's a good next one, bringing up the initial public comment.
Okay.
Anything else on your list?
Um, I have the information from Quest Diagnostics, that it's three hundred fifty dollars. For um, testing. So, move forward, we had talked about library and fire department. Again, people, people should go to their provider first, they can go direct to Quest, um, but to go to your provider first, it might be covered in your health insurance anyway.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, do you want a motion on that? Just so it's black and white in the minutes that we're okaying it. Something about that.
At chief.
I want a motion on it, so that it's, there's some question as to whether or not we approved it. I will make a motion to authorize the P pass testing for employees of the town and members of the fire department.
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Joy?
No, thank you.
Jay, number? Rick?
I, I have one inquiry, uh, and then I have a little report of the rail trail. If we, do we have any idea when Cordell's gonna come up with the uh, rewrite or update of the ordinance on the roads?
He, he's been on vacation for a couple weeks, so that was something that we were gonna tackle when he got back.
Okay. So we'll have in the near future, hopefully.
I, yeah, I wouldn't say probably not at your, maybe at your next meeting, I don't know, the Fourth of July and everything. But it's definitely on both his list and my list, we've talked about it.
Okay.
Something he could plan on doing.
The uh, first meeting of the uh, Rail Trail Advisor Group was held on the nineteenth, down at the freight uh. Building in um, San Rospi. That group is uh, probably, at the, at that day, was at least sixteen strong, it's gonna be a little bigger. It's an advisory board of a, a great mix of people from Osapi, Madison, Tamworth. They're gonna bring in two people from Albany, they discovered later on that part of the twenty one miles went through Albany, so they're gonna try to get some reps from there. Most of the um, meeting was spent talking about developing an RFP to get out by um, the end of July. So that we can get a management plan for the entire twenty one miles. For those not familiar with the rail trail, it's twenty mile, it's called the Conway Branch, twenty one miles long. It runs from currently uh, Route twenty eight. To West uh, West Main Street at Dunkin' Donuts in Conway. You can imagine the nuances throughout that twenty one miles. And so. Senator McConkey was there, uh, Executive Council Kenny was there. Senator McConkey had some issues because. They have been working on this in Osapi for about four years. A lot of stuff went through the legislature, there were some changes made to accommodate Osapi, the people in Osapi want that section of trail open. Uh, to the extent that during this last town meeting, they had a warrant article that they approved for twenty five thousand dollars to move it. Particularly from the center of Osapi, Center of Osapi, down to Route sixteen, near the Gulf Driving Range, that section there. It has the least issues with regard to culverts, bridges, and those sorts of things, easiest to open. So, the RFP is, is going to be modified so that we'll get the management group here. We'll do that section first, turn it over to them, and then keep going all the way up. This is a project that's gonna go decades, some of us here will probably never see the end of it. Madison has uh, the biggest piece of, of the rail trail. It is a quarter of nineteen, the entire length of it, it's a major snowmobile trail, that's not going to change. There is an oddity in the middle of this, that part of um, the rail system got sold to private person. And so, there are ongoing negotiations with that. DOT, we understand, was um. Kind of trying to leverage this person, and the, the new group of Parks and Rec, that all the author, authorizations have been transferred to. Uh, are trying to work with him, and trying to resolve and have access over that private land. Uh, we also have uh, other interests, there's another group from out of state that wants to put rail bikes on the Tamworth end. Uh, there seems to be some tension there among some of the people, I, I haven't really got to the bottom of all that. But it's kind of interesting to know that in Madison, we have a fellow that lives on uh, Silver Lake, who moved here from Rhode Island back in the early two thousands, I understand. Owns uh, rail bikes, and has worked out his, an agreement with the owner of the rail line here. To have a, a, a concession, if you will. And I understand the board has approved that.
Seven hundred and twenty five feet of rail?
And he, he do, he was there, um, and indicated to us he couldn't go any further than that, because the, beyond that, it's flooded by beaver dams. That's all part of this management prep plan, uh, to get that cleaned up. So uh, our next meeting is on July tenth, we will formalize the RFP, it'll go out within a week or so. And by uh, I think it's April. We should have that all back and be able to awards, April twenty sixth, award it to a group. So that's where it is, the other thing is, it's, the interesting is. Ninety percent of this uh, project, uh, depends on two things, grants and volunteers. And I gotta tell you, there's a group in, in uh, Osapi that's really hyped up about this. In fact, the new chair of the uh, of our group is Phil Valari, for those of you who were here when the Fort did their presentation, he was here. So looking forward, that's um, a really interesting process, and try to keep you up to speed on it, thanks.
Thank you, Rick. I'm only here to talk about ball field, were you able to get any numbers out of Josh?
Oh, um, he, he said he'd look into it, I haven't heard back, as far as that, I can check back, I'll see him tomorrow, um, so I'll check back in with him on that.
I have, so I have, Burke has agreed to hold a price in from last year, and to mobilize the screen for free. And I have volunteers to run the screen here. Unless Josh thinks he can do it significantly cheaper screening it, that, I doubt it, because he'd have to have the labor of screening it as well.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what those numbers are, but.
But I'll, before I do anything, I'll wait to hear from Josh, but pending Josh being any cheaper, or sorry, for digging does, being any cheaper. For the material, I would like this board's approval to move forward with Burke to get the rest of the material I need for the upper field. Uh, like I said, he's holding our prices from last year and has agreed to mobilize the screen for free. And I have volunteers to run the screen here, so it won't be done by town personnel or across the town, any money as far as that's concerned.
Whatever money is still covered under the ball field account?
Yes, it'll all come out of the ball field account, and it'll be close to a little bit less than what was spent last year for the lower field. It should be less, because we're buying less material. But fueling prices, fueling prices have increased a little bit, so the trucking fee, the, the aggregate fee is the same, and the mobilization is free. It's the trucking from Osapi that may change a little bit, but it won't be off by much.
Should we need a motion? Roger.
Is that everything we need from, like, this year for the ball fields, or?
That, that'll, will be done, as far as the infield's go, that's my purview, Village Green is still servicing our, our grass, we have a contract with them to come out four times a year.
How much does that leave us in the account?
I went through this with you last time, and I, I wanna say there's still thirty.
Treasurer, trustee of trust funds report might, oh, maybe actually in the back, if we added money, we didn't add money to it this year though, did we?
No, we didn't, so it would be.
She's gonna be in like the hundreds and nine-ish page, I think, something.
It, wasn't it on that page with the grid?
We didn't add anything to it this year though, so we wouldn't have listed it.
Even just a ballpark, so.
I, so we started with sixty three thousand last year, that much I know, before we purchased, and we spent roughly twenty, twenty five. Somewhere, I know we spent somewhere around seven or eight thousand last year on the infield for down here, and we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty four. The fertilization and Village Green in that contract, so we still have at least thirty thousand in there, probably more.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, I'll wait to hear from.
Yeah, I, I'll, what I'll do, I'll call him tonight.
If they can do it cheaper, then we'll go that route.
Okay.
If it's. Go back with us, because we'll just screen it.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Did have a few people call in, uh, the concerns that they had is at the transfer station with debris dumping, so as far as construction debris. And I've experienced this, and I, I understand the concern, like you go in with a trailer full, and you get a price of just say a hundred and fifty dollars for the trailer, and the next time you go in the same trailer, similar load, and it's two hundred. Like, the question was, is there a way that we can get, it used to be so much per cubic foot. Get like a breakdown per size, so it would be like a sixteen, fourteen, twelve, ten pickup truck, you know, eight foot bed, six foot bed. Where we, that way, the business owners in town, people using the transfer station would be like, alright, this is gonna cost.
This much.
Yeah, there's so many trailers at X amount. Because they, the, the concerns that came to me was that it's too subjective, it's someone's discretion, instead of a set price for whatever. And they weren't necessarily upset about the price, it was just the fluctuation in the price from time to time. So it's, because sometimes it's cheaper, sometimes it's more, and um, so that was a concern, so I said I'd bring it to the board and see if we could come up with some sort of. Conclusion that would, and discuss it with, whether John, Josh, or whoever to, to get that. Some sort of something we could have posted, or at least known.
What is it, something in the flyer?
Yeah.
See, it's, it says right, like, when you drive into the transfer station, it says, see attendant for the price. So that, it used to be, I think it was three dollars a cubic foot, and then that disappeared.
That was like thirty for, like a truck, sixty for a trailer kind of thing.
I, I thought we could, it ended up being posted.
Okay, well, that, so if there is a fee, it should be posted, and if it's, if it is that low, whether we adjust it for obviously the cost of.
Getting rid of it.
Getting rid of it, which I, I, again, I understand, uh, using both Madison and Conway, depending on where I'm working. Um, Madison is more expensive, but we don't have a scale, and that's fine, and I'm not worried, I'm, I'm not upset about the price that I pay, but. It's just that it would make it easier for the people using that, and for their business, to be able to say it's gonna cost X amount to do this without having to, so.
It used to be by the truckload, like, there was a, there was a name, and then it went to so much per cubic foot, and then you found, I mean, how do you figure out a cubic foot?
It, it used to be like. Right. Sure, right, and so I think that's, I think that's where we should sit down.
Yeah.
With the powers that be and say, alright, a sixteen foot dump trailer this size would be X, and a fourteen would be X amount less, because it's, you know, two, and it's all done in two foot increments pretty much, so. We could break it down, and then at least, you would have an, uh, you would know, go in and say, alright, it's a, it's a trailer loaded at two hundred fifty bucks, right? So that, that was the concern, it's just that it's, every time you go there, even with the same trailer, you're paying a different amount, and granted, like, load size does change from time to time, but.
And you could have it full of shingles, and you could have it full of a bunch of two by fours, you know, so I mean, yeah, so the, the.
Right.
Yeah, the load, load, load size might be driving that, you could do with a level foot load.
Right, but if I, if I bring, and I have brought multiple loads that are approximately the same size and paid three different prices, again, I'm not complaining about the price, I'm just saying that it's, it's.
No, not a hundred.
Different.
Right, and, and is, and for planning purposes, if, if we had, right, and that's it, and, and I think there's a little bit.
Expectation.
And not, again, not on my part, and I don't, I don't think there's any sort of malicious intent, but when you have someone without a posted number making the decision. Whether or not, I mean, I, again, I don't think there's any malicious intent, but people can say, well, I feel like I'm getting the shorter of the stick, because so and so doesn't like me, you know, they could use that. So if we had something concrete that was posted, I don't even care if it's supposed to dump, as long as at some point we post it, and it's, people know or have the access to the fee.
Flyer's on our website, so it is, it is.
Yes.
Is it up on the board too? I don't think there is.
Cause they said, well, I, I don't, I haven't looked at the website, but when you drive in, and you go through the construction debris, it just says, see attendant. So, and I know that for our construction debris, it all goes in the same dumpster. Right, we don't separate shingles and sheet rock, and like they do at Conway where you have, they have different prices for each thing. So, I, I just, it was just, like I said, it was something that was brought to me, and, and it makes sense to me, again, I, I didn't, haven't had an issue with it, but it does make sense to have something. And maybe revamp it so that it, it doesn't cost the town money, right, cuz if we have old pricing, things obviously cost more money to get rid of now. So just, so would you go over and just make sure it, it works for everybody and that it's, it's uniform?
Makes sense.
The flyer's on the website, so maybe we can all take a look at the flyer, and then maybe John will be kind of like diverse us with his presence at our next meeting. From the other side of the table. We'll let him sit up here if he really wants.
For old times' sake. Probably doesn't want.
Anything else, Rick?
That's it.
Albany Town Hall called, the town administrator over there, and she wanted me to just give you an FYI if you would like to join them. They have a noise ordinance that they've never really enforced, and what I'd enforce, the part that they're gonna start to enforce is the Jake breaks on sixteen. That you won't be able to use it going through Albany. That you won't be able to use it going through Albany and they know and that, you know, it's Albany, Madison, didn't know if that was something that we had the ability to enforce also, but as far as I know, we don't have that kind of an ordinance.
We're happy with that, right.
But they were just kinda like throwing it out there so that the selectmen know that that's something they're gonna be enforcing if we wanna jump on the bandwagon and develop something or enforce what we have. I said I'd just pass it along, so.
Do we have anything whatsoever for noise?
Not for like a noise ordinance, no.
If we do, it's vague, right?
I was saying.
It's just kind of that discretion, chief.
There's nothing, you always follow the disorderly conduct RSA for unreasonable noise.
My understanding is enforcing it is not fun or nor easy.
I I wouldn't know, cause we've never done it.
I I'm not enforcing Jake break noise, that's just my opinion.
And I know the Tamworth tribe, when they, when they were doing the.
South Tamworth.
Yeah, well, when they were doing the the race track and they were trying to decide and and it was one of those things where.
They put it in the Jake break in the South Tamworth.
Yes, right, but I mean, when they, when they were talking about the noise ordinance issue with the racetrack and they were trying to test for no, like to see and it's just, it is, it's one of those things that's very hard as far as decimal levels and all that stuff to enforce. Like I get the Jake break, no Jake break zone thing.
Right.
But as far as like a noise ordinance, it's difficult.
But that would require putting these guys out on route to communicate for a truck to go by there.
Right.
You have to buy an equipment to test it too.
Right.
Decibel meters.
So we just.
Can I get you at the end?
I can remember not too long ago, the issue gone.
Done. Can I get you at the end? Can we get through everybody and then I'll come back to you guys?
Also. Sorry.
In, in terms of.
Hopefully you can hold on to it, I'm sorry.
It, in terms of the noise ordinance, I've worked at airports and have a lot of friends who still work at airports. They have easily enough decibel meters that can measure should this roll into an STR conversation at some point, it is possible to have noise ordinance and to measure because they have to measure the aircraft noise, you know, over the residents and stuff like that.
It's just the cost to the town for the equipment.
Not a lot, actually. She was gonna, friend of mine, um, at Naples Airport in Florida was gonna send me what they use, which is actually not a lot of money. So, it's something to consider it as an option.
The second thing? Was uh, we vow letters went out last Friday, so people will be getting them in the next few days if you haven't already got it. On the front page of the website, I posted everyone's new values by map and lot and by owner, so if you go on the front page there, you'll find those sheets that are like fifty-three pages long of everybody, so you can check your neighbor, see how you're doing in terms of equality and equity and all that kind of stuff that everybody's kind of being, you know, you're not way off. And take advantage of what it says in the letter to make an appointment with Chad if you feel me. Thank you.
Chief, Brooks?
Uh, I gave you all a copy, yep, as of close of business today, we're just, just shy of thirty percent collected. It's somewhat slower than recent past, but, and I don't know if read anything into it, the weather's been different, whatever. But the due date is still July tenth, so they've got time, but that low percentage is gonna be a busy next two weeks if we hold the same percentage as normal. I have not had a busy Monday yet, and usually I'm doing three deposits on Monday. So I I don't know how to explain it, but I suspect we'll end up in the same percentage as we typically have, so that just means the next two weeks are gonna be busier than normal. Is what it is. On the fire department side, I got a notification, Jim, I don't know if you did, that New Hampshire DOT is gonna be closing one fifty-three. Just north of the Hard Corner and just south of the Eaton Village store to replace a box culvert. They anticipate it being closed for four days. And that is anticipated to happen.
East Madison Road is gonna be reduced.
In the next, next, next month, the middle of, middle of July.
A little quiet down Glines Hill for a couple days.
July fourteenth?
Yeah, fourteen.
Well, and 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 I don't know what that means, that I I think, I suspect that maybe at that time, maybe at the bottom of Mooney Hill, we should place our sign that said you can't get to Eaton from here or something. That's not gonna help because the written word does not guarantee comprehension, but.
So where is it gonna be closed?
We did our part.
Right, the four corner.
Route, Route one fifty-three, if you come out from Glines Hill, wanting to go north to Conway, it's gonna be closed right there. You're not gonna be able to get through.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so the little white churches?
Yep.
Yeah, but it's on the other side of the corner.
Right, the Crystal Lake Inn.
The north, the north side of the corner, between the corner and the village store.
It's closed.
There's a box culvert there that they're replacing.
And where they gonna put their close signs, did they tell you that?
They didn't, uh, I didn't get the ordinary package that I usually did, I just got a very brief email.
He usually.
They usually give me a plan of, we're gonna barricade here and.
It usually doesn't matter because people see road closed and they just keep.
Keep going.
Well, the hard part, and the di- the difficulty is for folks in Freedom and the south part of Eaton that go for emergency services that need to get to the hospital, that's gonna be.
Guess we'll probably be, I'm stand by for that. Come in, yeah.
Yeah, Madison.
East Madison Road.
Yep.
Okay.
But just something to get out there for the public, that's uh, that the fourteenth, I think, is what they said.
Yeah.
July fourteenth?
Yep.
For fourteenth.
Hold on, let's wait till July.
I'll be on.
And I think, I mean, we can talk, do the best we can on our side to keep people from ending up over there just having to turn around and drive all the way down to East Madison.
Yes, I mean, we'll, I'm sure we can put a sign over there, like you said, I don't know how much good it's gonna do, but.
Well, and I don't know where the best place to put the sign, maybe at the base of Glines Hill instead of Mooney.
Right, Pound Road, yeah.
Just to, hey, before you go up here, you can't get.
You got Pound Road and Motocross, you can go either way.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, because once you come up, up the hill.
Be done.
Right, and you don't want everybody turning around your driveway, I.
They, they don't. They don't, they, they aren't going slow enough.
Kate put on the website too, I mean.
That's what, that's all I have.
Tyler?
Summer camp started Monday. It was hot, still is hot. Um, today we thought we might have to leave the lake early cause it was too hot, but it, there was a beautiful breeze and the kids were having fun and took breaks and so we stayed and it was great. Um, I noticed a few things at the beach, just like the signage, I think might need to be updated. Um, but nothing major eventually, we can do that. Um.
Speaking of beach, while you're taking a minute to talk, uh, wraps went out, so thank you to DPW. People are very happy to see those.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, and thank you to Jake too, um, he came and blew up one of our tubes the other day. That was helpful. And counselors need to be ready, you know, so they were out on a tube by the dock, ready to go if they needed to jump in. Um, and we had trouble blowing them up, so they blew them up for us.
More than just a police officer.
Yeah, yeah, it was great. They were heroes. Um, I guess the only other thing, um, which I've already mentioned to you guys, I think, um, is just a tent at the field for old home week at some point. Yeah, whatever.
Michael just wants to make sure you're gonna be there this time.
When I see the crowd of laborers standing out there, I'll, I'll get the tent up.
Yeah. Yeah, we can wait for cooler weather too, obviously. I think that's it.
Just gonna run home real quick, I'll be back.
Tomorrow.
Chief?
Uh, not so much, the activity's been fairly steady. Uh, it was uneventful bite week for us, which was nice. I do have, um, just cause I just did, I've got Tessa, um, enrolled in a, the Dare School. Uh, the Dare Program, so we'll have, um, that back in the school, they're excited about it. That won't happen till, uh, the middle of November. Um, but she'll be ready to go, um. And, uh, that's it. Putting the sign wherever I can, working on the signs, let me know, I move it every other day or so, um.
It's really nice to see it and I've noticed that the traffic, you know, when I come down from Conway to the lake. You know, people are not speeding like they used to.
Good, yeah, it's at, it's at Nichols Beach now, just.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, and it seems to work.
Yes. Um, I'll always say around Dergan Pond, either side of it.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Cause it also drops, it, Dergan Pond itself is thirty-five, but once you come around the corner to near the daycare through Gummey Cemetery and up, it's thirty.
Right.
But either way, people love taking those F curves as fast as they can.
Oh, just cause we're talking about the speed signs, I'll be looking to get, um, using a, uh, New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant. Um, some of the smaller portable signs that are easily moved. Um, Effingham has a bunch, you'll see if you go out forty-one towards Tamworth, Tamworth PD has one right before you get to Aldridge.
Yep.
And that's a three-quarter, they pay three-quarters of it and we pay the other quarter, um. So I'll be looking to, I actually be looking at it in the next month or so because the fiscal year for the, um, the federal government ends, I don't. I think the third quarter is just about to end, so, um, they, they look to start us moving on those grants pretty early, so, um, I'll be investigating those.
Yeah, July first, I think.
Is it possible, I don't know if this is the same thing, but to have ones like permanently attached to some of those signs, like the one right around Nichols Beach, like have it permanently attached to your, you know, thirty-five and your speed is still forty-five kind of thing?
Yeah, you buy. Sure, yeah, they're not permanent, um, they can be permanent, but essentially you buy multiple brackets and you can put brackets in problem areas
Okay.
and then just move them as you see fit or as needed. And they just lock to it and some of them are super fancy, you can drive a car by it and download all the data onto a Bluetooth. Um, or you just plug a USB into it, uh, there's different levels of, um. How much of a Cadillac do you want?
I'd rather have less fancy and more of them.
Yeah, same here.
Alright, that's it.
Thank you. Donna, you had a question, I'll hit yours before we get to the veterans thing.
Oh, I was just gonna comment, uh, not years ago, um, it, the noise ordinance was discussed at length at the town. And I believe they decided, the powers that were, um, that it would be too difficult to enforce. And they decided to go in a different direction.
I think we can have this discussion the year I go elected.
Just FYI.
Also, one more question. Um, you've hired legal counsel to represent the town for, with P-plus situations, is that what I understood?
Should the need arise.
Yeah, uh, is there anything in the, I know, can you just say yes or no, is there anything in the legal arena that would, um, direct you hiring legal counsel?
No comment. No comment. Veterans?
Oh, yeah.
Do we go, you want me to?
Go ahead.
So you're better organized. The, um, the, the, the tabling at the transfer station is just a, uh, P, a slip of paper that contains the individual's name, address, email. And, and on the back of it, even if they don't wanna fill it out, there is the, the, is a comment for them to drop it at Town Hall. I will come talk to Linda, I will provide a shoebox that's sealed, that has a slit in it that they can fold it up and put that in there so that their information is not out there, but no DD two-fourteens are being taken at that table. They will all be directed to come to Town Hall so that their personal information, their social security number, all that stuff is protected. Um, I had previous conversations, believed that Mike was the, um, was the individual to hand them to, but um, I'll correct that and make sure the information that we're giving out at that table over the weekend indicates, just bring it to Town Hall, there'll be a shoebox there for you to put it in and, and then I'll work with Linda and get with Linda to help upload or, or put in to the, in, into the database that information. All we're trying to do is collect more information regarding how many veterans, cause we know that the, the database only currently contains those veterans that are getting the tax credit. There are a lot of veterans who do, weren't getting the, the tax credit and, um, we're just looking to be able to, to have a better idea of how many veterans we actually have in town. What are the services then, using that, what other services can be provided to them, what other information is important for them to get, to understandings, to get fed, so to speak. And so that's what that tabling is all about. We're not gonna collect DD two-fourteens. And then if there's a, you know, maybe going forward, if there's a two times a year deadline for individuals as they make the decision to be added to the Veterans Monument, that there's a deadline of say, you know, one July and one January. You know, and then names aren't added until that next year. We know that we don't add them until we get three or four of them, cause it's not, it's too cost prohibitive to have them come out for every single name, so.
Correct.
Maybe going forward, we can work with the Board of Selectmen and Linda to figure that out, to see what's the best, what's the best option for that.
The discussion was always, we tried it, if we have enough names, we do it before Veterans Day and same thing, if we have enough names, we'll do it before Memorial Day if possible, weather depending, but I could be.
No, we decided it would be annually before.
Veterans Day.
The Veterans Day in November because just thinking, in the average year, it's too cold.
To do it.
Yeah.
To, to do the engraving in the spring, you don't wanna.
Correct, so.
Correct.
Well, it would be my lock.
Right, oh, no, no, I hear you, no, absolutely.
So.
The thought process is once a year before Veterans Day.
Before Veterans Day, okay, so if we, if we, you know, annually put a notice out that if there's other veterans, cause I, I've talked to people who have indicated that. Like my husband and I are waiting till we're, we have been actual residents of the town for ten years, that kind of thing. There are other people who are, who are, you know, have other considerations that they weren't a, a veteran while they were a resident here, it was before their time, before they moved here. So they're a little leery about having their name added to the monument, cause it's Madison, veteran, but, um, but, you know, I think we can continue to dialogue about that and get some, get some information. Um, the last piece that I had, um, regarding the website, so I went today to try and pull up the agenda for the selectmen's meeting and it gave me one of those four oh four errors, not found kind of thing. Is there an, an issue going on with our website?
Just by chance, I'm getting that with my insurance from my store. I don't know what's going on with that, so.
Donna came by today and said that she was having trouble and the two of us compared phones and I did find out that there is something going on wonky with the phone version.
Okay.
And I've sent an email to our website provider to find out if they.
Same thing today, we've been playing tag on that, so.
Working on it.
I'm, I'm surprised you haven't heard about it because I tried to call up the agenda last meeting, so it's, it's been, it's been four weeks. I'm surprised people haven't reached out before this, but, yeah.
Not that we're completely interested.
It did now?
It, it works, yeah.
Yep.
It worked for you now.
I wa- I was a, I was able to use the website earlier, so.
You get, you get a website, but it's a different website. It's almost like the old version without, like you can't call up the minutes or the agenda.
Well, I took a screenshot of it and I.
It doesn't have the committee's, um, minutes or agendas.
Sometimes it doesn't have a menu, like to, to drop down to go to the.
Right.
That's what it, yeah, that's what's missing today, so I opened it, I sent that to our website lady.
That's. That's what Linda noticed.
I just.
Quick question on the Veterans Monument, speaking of criteria, Sharon just kinda prompted a question, do we have a criteria for folks, is it they live in Madison now and that's pretty much it, like?
We had this discussion too and I don't recall exactly what it was. I don't know that we have anything on paper.
Okay.
Back when it first started, you know, it was.
Oh, you know.
Well, it was, you know, basically, when it first started, I wasn't involved in it at all because I, my husband and I were both veterans and, but we had moved to Madison. And then I was approached by one of the committee members and, you know, said, why not? And I'm saying, well, I thought it was just people who were born and raised in Madison. But eventually it evolved that people that were living in Madison would do it. And we always worked on getting so many names, like twenty or twenty-four, twenty-five names to get someone to come out and engrave them because of the cost and the time factor that involves. Because when they come to engrave, they charge you so much per letter, per name and then, you know, coming out here and doing it. So to prevent the cost from going up high, part of our decision when we were active was, you know, hold off.
Okay. Signature items?
One more. I took pictures of Albert Road. I know that the selectmen had talked, that's the road that comes off of Mooney Hill.
Yep, and yep.
I took pictures of Albert Road, I know that the selectmen had talked, that's the road that comes off of Mooney Hill, that like dead end.
It's midnight, yeah, yep.
Uh, classic road, classic road. But I know that there had been discussion, I think last year about talk, having the DPW talk to the individual who was maintaining that road. To make sure that they were maintaining it to the town's standards and that there was going to be a new letter of agreement. I, I'm just asking if that ever happened, because as you go by it today, there are two five-foot burms of dirt. On either side of the entrance to that road, a lot of which washes into the culvert that's right there next to the two seventeen, right on that corner.
Does it prevent passage?
No, it doesn't prevent passage, it's on the sides of the road, but I don't, is that dirt supposed to be in the road and it's been taken out of the road? And so I'm just looking, you know, and I, I, it doesn't matter necessarily either way, as long as it's being maintained to the town standard in that there is that updated letter. And so I'm just looking and asking if that was ever done.
Is Albert Road, no, I, I'm not sure, is it private or is it a town maintained road?
It's a class six.
It's a class six, okay. It's not maintained, it was maintained by, by, for. Right, right, right.
It consists, consistently, after storms, washes out into Mooney Hill.
Joke done. That would be true.
Oh, I knew that, no, but then Mo Giordano took it over and I think.
Giordano took it over, yeah.
Okay, so we're not sure who's maintaining it at the time, because maintenance moved from one person after the other person passed and now that person's house is for sale, so we can.
Well, somebody was on the road for all that dirt and put it on the mound, two or three weeks ago.
I, I feel like it was him, the owner, yeah. Yeah.
Someone drained it recently.
I think it was for sale purposes.
Go back, so is the answer to my question, no, that, that letter was never redone?
I don't recall, if I don't have my head, I'd have, um, yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
I remember the discussion, but I don't remember exactly what happened.
Yeah, that was about a year ago.
I know that that road and those trails are often a sore.
This time of year, they can clear the road with the little tractor that they have.
Yeah.
The problem comes in the winter, when the stuff washes in the road and freezes, and then it just keeps building a hole, and it's dangerous.
Heather? The donation from the hospital, did you figure that out? Not yet. How's your mind pass that one?
I'm probably processing correctly.
And I'm not gonna sign that one. Yes, I meant to say.
I do have one more question, um, Linda and I had, had corresponded earlier this week with the Veterans Service Committee about, um, OLSA office. I'm just asking if those got signed by the selectmen and. Perfect.
Two more seconds and this label will be.
Thank you very much.
Um, I do have a question, you coordinated with Mr. Aruda about your presence at the.
Yes, we did, and he asked, we asked him specifically where to set it up, what dates and what times would be amenable to the transfer station, we didn't wanna interfere with anything. And so he, he directed us where, where to set up.
That's changing, Heather.
And thank you for following, very, I'll, I'll send you the margin that we'd like to put on it.
It is a little tricky, cause we need a four man.
It's not, it'd be like veterans, check, attack at table.
Well, that's hoping to get here by Tuesday, three oh five, it's like. Pretty good, he was hot today, I said nah, I said, you told me you don't go beach day, mother's son.
Well, there have been.
Been buying, so. Hey, yeah, it's good, loved it, yeah.
How it's gonna, but, but I guess then if it was on the sign.
Can't complain, that's, that's what I tell him, doesn't complain.
At the transportation.
Yeah, well.
It's gonna be inside the trailer.
Yeah, he went to it with me.
We're gonna put it right, and we know what the committee's right, right before the tables.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought.
Sure, oh, sure, yeah, yeah, right.
Yes.
It's good, it's good to get, at least get a name or something, right, like, hey, I gotta realize that you won't think that they want, right, like, that's always.
So that if people came, came in and you got it, that's the only way you can go, you gotta go that, oh, alright, and if we have that big thing, so.
With one reassessment. I know, well, veterans don't, didn't apply to it because.
Right, right. Say you don't be at least twelve hours.
Information.
Fair enough. He's not gonna do several?
Information.
He was so excited, and then they come for me to ask, just finish this up, and I said, I don't wanna know.
It's off the task.
It's hard to, I suppose. Kinda like Bentley's plan, I don't know, who else from town, well, that's right, like, no one's on plan, so, hopefully we can get him back into the, the cupboard again. Alright, yes, we are, sorry.
That was thirty years ago.
I am gonna make a motion to enter non-public session for RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, little c. Matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself. Unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall exceed any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy. If based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Second it?
Do I have a second? Second by Jim, roll call vote.
Second it?
Joy, I?
Jim, I?
Adam, I, Jake, I, we're in non-public, thank you.